Join me in the pledge then Stan leaves in a word of prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to serve you today and to serve our, our residents. We ask you for wisdom. To make good decisions, we ask you for the willingness to cooperate and the willingness to. Serve the residents of this county. Please be with us as we enter into this meeting and guide us in thought and word. Amen.
Amen. Thanks Stan. Hey, should have in front of you or have received the minutes from previous meeting. Any, May twenty seventh, any questions, comments, or concerns about that?
I understand.
Motion approved.
Stan Doug, thanks. Motion passes.
I think we even asked that question.
You have something for us to make, yeah.
Okay, Tony, what have you got for us today?
Just handed you all the monthly animal shelter report submitted by the Heizers. And if you so approve, I can have that entered into the record. Over on the left at the bottom, it kind of tells you what they did and what they have. Five dogs they have, two they transferred to the claim, one they adopted, so forth and so.
What, what's, does transferred mean the same as adopted?
Out of our shelter. Might have been transferred to Fort Wayne Animal Rescue, or it could have been transferred to some other.
Could have been transferred to Paradise.
Yeah.
I assume Fort Wayne.
Well, just see some numbers here. It looks okay to me. I've, I moved that we approved the animal shelter report.
Stan, thanks guys. I motion passes. Then we have the weekly health insurance claims from Allied. I verified the claimants. And we, the amount total is way less than what it started with because of stop loss. So the amount is twenty one thousand, six eighty eight thirteen, twenty one thousand, six eighty eight thirteen. Medical was one eighty seven, seven forty two eighty eight. Prescription was fifty five, nine thirty nine eighty seven. And then we had some stop loss reimbursement and so forth. So that brought it down to twenty one thousand, six eighty eight thirteen that we owe.
So that's what you're asking for, twenty one sixteen thirteen. Stan, what do you think?
Very good. Motion approved.
Second.
There's that.
Stan and Doug, thanks guys. The stop loss really.
Yeah.
Helped out.
Young busters on that one. Glad we paid the stop loss bill this month. What else have you got for us, Tony?
You should have received the payroll time card approval list for your appointed department heads. So we have that for approval. I'm, I'm assuming y'all received that.
Do you have any questions on payroll time cards?
No.
If not.
Payroll Friday, right?
Yep.
Right, okay. I, I move we accept payroll.
Our second.
No, we're talking about this, the time.
The time, sorry. Time cards that will reflect on this, this pay.
Motion passes.
Now, however Doug, we now have the actual payroll claims. And the actual payroll claims are in the amount of three hundred eighty six thousand, five eighty three twenty. Three eighty six, five eighty three twenty.
We all want paid Friday for three eighty six, five eighty three twenty, Stan.
Motion approved.
Gary, our second. That's your job.
Yep, motion passes. Thanks guys.
Um, now Steve, I'm part of Tom and Mike kind of, but I'm just gonna sit up here because. And I kind of put them, I didn't even ask him, I think, I apologize. But we kind of put them right after me so they can get in and out.
Absolutely.
Uh, and it has to do with, I brought up with you all about scanning these commissioners' books. Up here, down here. And Tom has used this company, US Imaging, and he brought Mike with him. To kind of go over how it works, what the possibilities are, something like that.
This is Josh, Josh Doshen.
Or Josh, I'm trying to ask, where did I say Mike?
Mike. I've been called worse.
Isn't it good to call him? Don't you have a mic?
No.
Say it was Josh?
Josh.
Josh.
Thanks guys.
So I mean, I guess you, first question, Tony approached me about scanning these books. And I'll go through what I did while I did mine four, five years ago. I got two quotes because when I talked to my software company, they gave me two companies basically to work with. I couldn't find anybody else outside of one, I didn't get three. I picked USImaging for, the main reason is the quality of work they do and um, they came here to scan. I didn't have to send any of my records out. Um, they were a little bit more expensive, but sometimes you pay what you get for it.
Yeah.
So, and that's the main reason why they came here and just the quality of work they did. Now, I know Shelley did something two years ago about a scan, scan, he quoted on it. He was not the lowest and she went with a lower one. But he was the one that was recommended by my ground and Shelley's job. He saw the quality work that USImaging did. Not he recommended USImaging, but she went a different. So I guess I, I need to know what you guys want. He can ask any technical questions he might have, stuff like that.
You take the books apart?
Um, so any books that currently have sewn bindings, they will stay in those bindings. We don't cut pages out. We don't destroy the books at all. Uh, we can scan them as is. So when that we're done, the books look exactly like they did when we started. Anything that's mechanical bindings, we'll take out of those bindings, we'll scan them, we'll put them back in the bindings. Um, and close them all up. So like I said, it'll look exactly like this. Um, we're gonna scan them in color. Reason we scan them in color is that we can convert them to black and white TIFF, but we can enhance areas. So once you get to the old handwritten books. Um, even typewritten books that the typewriter ribbon starts fading, things like that. We can give you fully legible, hundred percent legible documents regardless of what kind of quality they are right now. Um, but you will also get a copy of those color images. So for backup purposes, should anything ever happen to the books, you'll have full sixteen point seven million color images. But the black and white images are the ones you'll use. Um, it's anybody has to search. We also have the capability, and that's something that's new this year, uh, where we can actually take your, your books and we can make them fully searchable. Regardless if they're handwritten or not. And so we have AI software that can go through and read the documents and it will transcribe them to text and make them searchable. So. You'll see the original page, the handwritten page, but you could type words and search throughout all of the books to find the pages referencing. You know, maybe a certain thing that was talked about, a certain, you know, resolution that came across, um, but you would be able to search. Most likely with commissioner meeting books. Uh, we group them together by meeting date, and that's usually how, how they're grouped. Then they can be searchable within that.
So it'll, it'll read a script right in?
Yeah, one hundred percent will read a handwritten, handwritten script. Um, so we've done it um, in, in other states utilizing it for restrictive covenants. Some states passed. Um, laws that for their land records, you, we have to go back and find all their restrictive covenants in the past. Um, and then mark them and identify them. Through the handwritten books, we can do that. So that kind of technology sprung from that. Um, but yeah, right now today, uh, it's at ninety eight percent accuracy. And then we do a, a human verify after that that just. Somebody goes through and checks it to make sure. It'll give us confidence ratings of green, yellow, red, anything green is above ninety nine percent accurate. Yellow is anything from ninety five to ninety eight percent accurate. Red is anything below ninety five percent accuracy. So the yellow. And the red is what gets reviewed. The green does not get reviewed because it's.
So like Mark with, when he's talking about going back and searching uh, records, you know. A few years ago, we decided to codify our ordinances and resolutions. Is this something that would make it easier? To do that by being able to search these old, old records or I, because I know like deed adhesments and all that stuff comes up. I, you know, would that be an advantage for us?
Well, being able to search the commissioner's records would be helpful because there's really no. Good index to be able to search them right now. You've, you've got to find breadcrumbs and clues to tell you what book to look at. And there are some tools out there and we've got some indexes that help us find, you know, things in the commissioner's record, but. There's, there, there could be right of way grants, for example, in those books that we've got no clue where, where they're at.
You can ask Brad about that.
Yeah, the researcher who'd been doing all that was, uh, it stopped.
And so years ago, um, Frank Blackburn was our plaque book guy for years. And he was very thorough and he went through commissioner records. He did the best he could to identify. Our county road right of ways. And so he made a, he made a right of way book and record. And I got a copy of that. And so that Brad and I have been looking at this. And so. When you talk to the surveyors in the county, this is what they look for. This is what they refer to. So this is. The right of way uh, book dealing with Winchester Road. And then he sets out here from. You know, station to station, in this case from, you know, one road location to the next, intersection to intersection. Exactly where in the commissioner's record that road was commissioned.
And does that reference a commissioner's meeting date then, or what does that reference?
References a commissioner's uh, book.
Like book number?
Yeah. Yeah. So this one right here in particular, that's in here, uh, Frank Blackburn shows. From county road, well, from twelve hundred north down to five hundred west. So that section of Winchester. He says the right of way width is forty feet and you can find the grant and you can find the record for that road in book F one. Uh, page two forty three. So you bind the book, you know, here. And you go to the page.
What I, what I just heard was that those, that your system would cross reference those by date. And that document cross references by book number and page number.
Well, date will get us there too.
Okay.
Because the, they're, it's chron, it's chronological.
Your books are, on the behind it, they'll usually give you the date.
Dates are here. Okay.
So we can get there a number of different ways. And if you've got, you know, a word search that you could put together. And in which case I may do a search on, you know, right of way, or I might do a search on R slash W or who, who knows? Then it should scan, you know, all those, it'll, it'll pull back results and say, hey, I got a couple of hits. Look in this book, this one, this one. We can, then we can go find it.
Which Stan is different than the codification of the ordinances because American Legal Publicity did that. And. We take all the ordinance down, send it to them. They've got it all in a book. Although I think Mark still had some questions on what they have. It is online, but we haven't put it on the website yet because there's things.
There's some cleanup to do.
That Mark wanted them to clean up. So that's kind of a separate issue than the scanning issue for the books.
I know, uh, the, uh, the ordinance and stuff like you got even now, I record our computer software now. It's for a backup.
Does your software take the curb out of the page?
Okay, so yeah, uh, the enhancement software. So really that comes down to the book scanner that we use. The book scanner does that. So it projects a laser across the page. As it's scanning across the page, that laser is feeding it focal depth information. Um, and then curvature of the spine so that as it's scanning, it adjusts for all that. So the pages look nice and square. That you don't see that curvature. If there, we always generally do a one inch overscan to the other page. Because if there is data that goes down into the spine, like they're writing down into the spine, because they weren't wasting paper back then. Um, we al- always do a one inch overscan to the other side so that if there is data going down in the spine, you can still read it. And it doesn't get cut off. Because if you cut it off too close to that line, you run the risk of cutting data off. Uh, so we don't do that. And really what it is, it's, it's more of a, a service than software. Um, so in order to search across the records, you would need. A piece of software to load them into. That has like a database to it. So if you have a current system like that.
Well, would it work with Doc Record?
Um, we can format it for any software. So it doesn't matter what the software.
Because that was some of the things when we were looking at different imaging companies, you know, some, some would offer a bridge. To our software and some we'd have to buy a different software. And some we'd have to migrate into it. It was just kind of like multiple different ways for us to be able to index the records that.
We would format it in whatever format the software company would need it in. That's part of our service. It's just data. We can put the data in any format. It does not matter. And in the beginning of the project, we would do a pilot where we would take, uh, usually a book. And we'll fully process it from start to finish, right at the beginning. And then we'll show it to you. So that you can make sure, yes, this looks exactly the way I want it to look. It searches the way I want it to search. We'll also put it in the format that that software company would need so that they can look at it and say, yep, this is the right format. I'm happy I can pull this in. Um, Adobe does offer a plugin to Windows that can actually search across PDFs. We do have Adobe. And so they offer that.
Cause see like now, I, I mean, I think as far as in your office, Tom. Any new records go into Doc Record, don't they?
They go into Doc's app. I don't know if they go into Doc Record.
Doc Record is right now the storage place for claims. And it's also used by Assessor and who else uses Doc Record, Shannon?
I don't send any myself to Doc Record.
Besides storage for claims. Doc Record, Assessor. Okay. Others use it.
Cause that was the idea of Doc Record was to have one software across all the offices. So.
And, and we can put it in that format. We would just need to know. You can get us the name of whatever representative that you communicate with that company. And we could reach out to them and say, hey, we just, you know, we're gonna do this project. This is what we're looking at doing. What is the format it needs to be in? And then we hard write that into our software. So that when we export the data out, it just exports into that format automatically. We don't have to monkey around with every single document.
I know we do have Adobe. We use Adobe a lot. Mike has a licensing for that. So that might even be a possibility. Without buying any, anything extra that you could.
If, if we wanted to search a, a current set of commissioner minutes, or how would we do that?
Right now, you got to come down here and get them.
Are you talking about the ones I assume?
I'm talking about today's minutes.
The minutes are recorded. They, they're, they're saved on paper. Andy saves them. And then we, I record them. They're also entered into Gateway. I have to enter into Gateway.
I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to think about is a, a system where I could, you know, obviously we're. The primary topic for discussion was how do we preserve physical records that don't have another copy of anywhere? But if you begin to move into how do we access them in an efficient manner? Then I, then I like to think about, well, how would we flow from a system where we can access these books? Into the same system, using the same system that allows to access the, the, the modern.
Well, yeah, like if you wanted to search the minutes from a year ago or two years.
Right, right.
How do you access?
Ethan puts those on the website for one thing.
But you're still, if you don't know what the date was, you gotta have to know the date.
Yeah, I mean, Ethan puts them on the website. Uh, the videos are also recorded on YouTube. And Andy saves the paper copy.
Let's say the paper copy, is that in Adobe or is it in Doc Record?
Paper copy is actual paper.
No, I don't, I don't mean that. I mean.
The digital copy, huh?
What do you mean?
The digital copy.
The digital copy is in.
Adobe?
My folder. No, it's a PDF or a Word document, Word document.
So it's not saved in Doc Record or Adobe or anyplace else like that? Huh.
It's how it's been done since.
But if it's a PDF record, it probably would be readable in Adobe, searchable by Adobe.
There are some old commissioners' minutes that are in PDF form. Like going back some of the years Doug was here earlier in PDF form.
I guess I'm just trying to figure out. We're just interested in preserving our, our old books and making sure that they don't go away in a fire. If that's the case, then I don't think we have to worry so much about the search function.
That was my original thought that I brought up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm assuming the search function is at an additional cost and maybe even a significant additional cost.
Uh, no, not as, not as significant. It's pennies per page. It's, it's not anything that's like a dollar a document or anything like that. It's pennies per page. So, and it's incorporated. So. Our AI software, which I will say too, this is, this is a, a topic that I, I think some people are a little leery of because it's new and it's. You know, not a lot of information out. Um, our system that we utilize is, is called a private tenant system. So. Ours is self-contained within our servers. Um, the data does not go out to some large language model like ChatGPT or something like that and then get brought back to us. So it's never exposed outside of our network. So all the work is done internally. That's called a private tenant system. Uh, ChatGPT would be called like a multi-tenant system where you have all this information coming back. Ours is just self-contained. Um, so it would not be exposed to anything outside of, of our network. But yeah, it is, it's, it's built in to our enhancement software. So I can just click a button and turn it on. And as it's enhancing them, it will transcribe them as well. Or I can uncheck the button and it, and it doesn't. It just takes a little bit longer to process them than it would normally if it was just doing enhancement. So I can make an option, you know, that just says this is the difference between if you wanted them searchable or if you don't want them searchable. To speak to your uh, plan as far as preservation goes, um, like I said, you would get a copy of all the color images. So should something happen? You could theoretically recreate those pages in color from those color images. Uh, we also store a copy of anything that we scan on a portable hard drive unplugged from our network. At the end of the project, um, of any project, we give you a guarantee that if you find anything you're not happy with, we fix it for free forever. So in order to do that, we need access to the record. So we, you'll, you'll get a free off-site storage option. Like it just comes with the project and they're not on our server. They're on a portable hard drive that's put in our vault that only management has access to. Um, but it is just another backup for you. So if something happened, we're located in Saginaw, Michigan. So we're about three and a half hours from here in North.
Have you had any issues finding anything on any of their documents?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I did, we did kind of come across some the other day. I'm missing some pages. I'm not sure. What happened and where, where it was fixed and that. Uh, I know the searchers. When they come in and they go to their microfilm and they try to make the copy, they'll say, can you grab me a copy off your hard drive instead? Cause it's better quality.
How much would it cost to, to digitize these books over here?
He'd have to look at, well, it comes down to, cause I know you have countless books over here too. Do we want to do those? There's a couple of different type of books we have over here commissioners and I feel whether the red ones are. Minutes and there's not gonna be. It just depends. Like you want to do every book here, he's just gonna have to take a look and.
Well, how, how would we, how would we know where to begin with a price?
So it's, it's basically based off of binding type. So are they mechanical or are they bound, sewn bound? Because we can scan four thousand pages an hour of mechanical paid, mechanical books that come apart. Where it's a thousand an hour for a book that's sewn bound. So that, that's a big difference.
So you would look at our project and give us a proposal?
I, what I, yeah, exactly. And what I can tell you is it will reside, the price will reside somewhere between five hundred dollars a book and a thousand dollars a book. Depending on page type, whether they're typewritten, whether they're handwritten, what the binding types are, what the page sizes are.
Like these books, as we look at them, they're all sewn bindings. They're all handwritten pages.
You're probably closer to the thousand dollars a book, per book. Yep.
Now, what's the grant specify, Tom? You're talking about a grant that do some of this stuff?
No, I didn't know about grants.
No, there's no grant involved.
So this is just a straight out cost. Okay, where is your, what do you do to work here or?
We come here. So we, our crew would come here.
They're set up right in this one.
Yep, they'll set up wherever you want us to. We'll scan the pages. Um, did we have twenty four hour access when we were here before? So we work twenty four hours a day until the project is done. Um, in the pricing sheet, it will have an estimated time onsite. Of how long we would be here. It'll have storage space requirements, all of that built into the proposal. So you'll get to see all of the aspects of it. Um, and then a project timeline, pretty typically a project like this, you know, you're talking six months probably from start to finish. Um, from the time we scan them till the time you get them.
If we could talk to Shelley and see where she's at with her budget. Cause we had approved five, five hundred thousand dollars.
Send, send the ARP funds. But we thought she was gonna exceed that.
Oh, really?
Last time, last time I heard, I thought she was gonna exceed that.
Well, I think there's like, if, if everything happens the way that it's expected to happen, that five hundred thousand will be used up.
Yeah.
Let, let, let's, let's have him take a look at at least our books and give us a proposal on that.
What he can do is too, is what he did for me is like, like you go to commissioner books this much, he can give you a quote on a count.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe give us a quote on all three sets.
Well, I mean, if you're saying a thousand dollars per book, that gives us a pretty good idea.
Yeah, I just counted eighteen books over there, I think, so.
If we're gonna do it, why wouldn't we include the console?
Well, I would think we would. But obviously cows can come up with their own money.
Commissioners' books are more, have, have you read through some of those claims from eighteen?
Some of them, but not.
They're, they're kind of interesting.
I'd be interested in, in getting an estimate of both commissioners and console.
Okay.
So we'd have to count up books and then.
Mark, you, you'll have to tell them procurement policy on what they're doing as the legal.
Yeah, that may have to do with how we do the specifications as well.
And we do, uh, depending on if your procurement department participates in TIPS. We are a part of TIPS, which is a governmental buy board. Um, so if you do participate in TIPS, it's kind of like Sourcewell. I don't know if you're familiar with Sourcewell. It's similar to that. You basically sign up. It has all of our pricing into it. All that pricing is good for four years. So. It's actually kind of two years old, the pricing in there. Um, so you actually get a better deal if you go through TIPS because the pricing is older. Um, but that is, you could just procure directly from them and then you get what you want.
We get an estimate out. Are you booked in for a period of time or are you?
Right now, we're looking at, at end of July for starting projects. But of course, that just kind of depends on, you know, when it's, when it's approved. I would give you a start date, but pretty typically two months out.
Okay.
If we did this, if we scanned all these books, would we put them on the website?
Commissioner's records? No, no reason to. Most of them are so old. You've got minutes on the website going back. That's probably most important. But commissioner records, not really.
Well, I'd be interested in giving an estimate, please.
Okay. Well, when we get a proposal from you, we'll take a look at that. Include the option for the, the searchable option as a, as an absolute option.
So it'd just be the books in these cabinets and the books in these cabinets, huh?
Yep.
Okay.
Is there anything's? Is there anything involved that's not in this room?
Well, Mike, Mike just talked about some books that are.
Road, road records that.
That are down at.
There's one up here, I think.
Well, I think Nate took some books down there.
Here's one right here, eighteen fifty two to eighteen seventy six, roads, roads.
And there, I think Mike said maybe three more books like that down at, down at the bank.
When you come back in, I, we can make the tour.
Okay. Good, good deal.
Hey Brad, Brad, didn't, didn't Nate take some books down there?
I don't know that he has them there. He might. I don't know that he has them there, he might have had books in them.
Oh.
But I don't remember them being in there still.
Yeah, okay.
I can always get Josh in down here to look at whatever needs to look at, we count, count the number of books.
I'll have to come back so we're not bothering you.
Okay, very good.
I asked Josh to come in.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it.
Start you down car, business card?
I sure do.
Did you have two, we got two of them?
Tom, don't you have a book scanner in your office? What do you use that for?
Uh, I really don't anymore since I had everything scanned.
Oh.
Right now it's down, I gotta, and I can't get a hold of the company that serves uh services and services they have. But I mean, they know, their book scanners are, they do a lot better job, like, cause when I do it, I'll have it. Cause I'm not experiencing it, I'm not, you know, they're just better at it.
Very good, thanks, guys, nice meeting you, Josh.
Yeah, nice meeting you too.
Well, yeah, Nate's not here today.
Yep, don't have Nate here today, Brad, what have you got for us? Good morning, guys.
Morning.
Um, so real quick, since our subject was just up, yeah, like you said, there's a supposedly a few more books down there. I'd like your guys' permission, I'll get hold of Bob Rhodes and see if we can bring them.
He's gonna take care of that.
Who is?
Mike Willey.
Oh, he's gonna get them? Mike Willey, I think he's gonna get them. Oh, awesome. He get them brought up here. Okay, good, cause like Mark was saying earlier, who knows what's in those books?
Yeah, might be helpful.
Cool, good. All right, first thing, we have a couple permits today. One is for Nipco. On five fifty north, between Picklewood Road and three hundred east. There's a. Bridge there, it's not a very long bridge, but the gas pipeline comes up and actually goes on the bridge and back down. So they are going to remove that off the bridge. So that just means they'll have a couple of holes at the end of the bridge, take the pipe and go down under the ditch with it.
Under the ditch.
Yeah. Which is a good thing, get them off, I don't like gas lines on bridges.
I think it's a good idea to give that issue in that permit. That is a motion.
Okay. Okay, motion passes?
So. Nipco on on a situation like that, do they, are they running some field? Field ex- uh examinations and discovering that this and that it originated through Nipco?
That I'm not sure, because I know this is one of the bridges Nate has future plans for, nothing immediate, but he's got future plans, so I don't know. Possibly in a research. That's how it started, or if they knew, I don't know. So the next one. Is Jay County RMC. On County Road fifty north, between six hundred east and six fifty east. Uh, they're going to move a power line away from buildings and fence and it's an interesting way it was set up because. Power comes down the road and then they cut off one across the field, between a house and sheds, backed over in that area. So it must have been done a long time ago, so now they wanna move it, take it down the road, you know, and do it the right way, yes.
I moved, we we uh issued a permit to RMC, do their work on fifty north between six hundred and six fifty east.
Does that count, Dan?
Thanks. All right, now I have some informational stuff for you. So, a company came in and was going paint striping the last couple of days, they should be finishing today. And I asked the crew to do the hill on three fifty west. Thank you. And the guy told me, he goes, as long as I remember, so he told the younger guy there, but I also called our. Our representative from that company, they make sure it's okay.
Did they, I didn't go up there, did they do that?
Not yet, no. Uh, they actually, they were, gotta finish the yellow stripes on Winchester yet from four hundred west north. So they'll just slip over there like the other one too, yep, it's right there, so they are gonna do that for us.
That's just a s- a center line, right?
Yep, just a double center line, no passing on the hill. And and did they need, do we need to have a engineer look at that or can they do that? Yeah, that was interesting, he can do it because it's whatever the speed limit is on that road, so like at fifty-five, you gotta be. So many feet, you know, each way, forty-five, so many feet each way, so he knew, that guy knew what it needed to be. Okay. Yep, so they can do it. Cool. Then tomorrow, the guys are going to be, hopefully if the weather holds, do our dust control that people have purchased. They're finishing the stonework on four hundred south for the road conversion. Which from uh five fifty west to seven hundred west, there, we add a foot of stone, we widen it, add a foot of stone, so they're finishing that up. And what we like to do, you know, you let it set, the guys are gonna replace all the pipes they need replaced, but. If we can get that done now and that can set all year by next spring, we should be able to actually put chip seal on. We like it to get packed in good. So is that the only road that is under conversion this this year?
Correct.
This season, there's a couple more that could go, but there's still a couple pieces of paperwork.
Right, they're still waiting on a couple of those.
But if those get signed, yes, we can start.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, three hundred north is getting paved. From twenty-seven to the county line, they finished the base coat yesterday and they're doing the top coat today, so.
So did they have to grind it?
No, they don't, all they, they grind the intersections, so there's a smooth transition.
Okay.
But they don't grind the main line of the road. I was on that this weekend, that's really nice. Even on the base coat, wasn't that some? It's nice.
Same width, right?
Yeah, same width, yeah, yeah, and then they'll go back then when they're done, since they're gonna raise it up about five inches, they'll put shorter stone along it. It'll appear a little wider.
That brooks?
Yes, brooks are doing it.
So are we gonna increase the speed limit to ninety miles an hour?
It'll be interesting when it's done, I I mean, I'd really like to go sit out there and just do some observations.
Let the sheriff deal with that, yeah.
Hey Brad, I've been at the ballot halls or come to church.
That's good, see, it's beneficial, and then the only other thing I have, County Road seven hundred south, the project from twenty-seven to one fifty west. Fleming's supposed to be starting tomorrow. So. And how long, how long will that take? Uh, roughly three months, okay, yeah.
That's 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 half mile.
Correct, on there, they're gonna, we're cutting the slope down, coming up the highway, it's gonna be curved and guttered, it's gonna, it'll be very, very nice, yeah. And I have a wider throat coming off of twenty-seven, no turn, actual turn lanes, but it's gonna, it's gonna be a much wider intersection, so.
Overdue, huh?
Yes.
They had, you had uh seven fifty north closed at Barrington Woods there, is that gonna be reopened or what's going on?
It's back open, um so. That was part of that. The housing addition there that they're expanding out on the north side of Golf Horse.
Right, yeah.
And Fleming's doing the work there, and it was interesting yesterday afternoon, I was up there looking at paint striping. I had somebody call me and they go, hey, why seven fifty north closed, I'm like, I don't have a clue.
Oh, they didn't tell you?
No, so I go out there and Fleming's is doing the work, it's one of their younger guys that's over the project, he's been told the steps. He just forgot, he did let the sheriff's department know it was closed, and then, you know, Fleming's been good to work with, I said, hey. They also need a root cut permit, well, within the hour, one of their guys was in there getting that all taken care of, so yeah.
Well, somebody asked me about that, they said, why wasn't that in the paper, and I'm like, I don't know.
Yeah, it was a surprise to us too, but they took care of everything, roots back open.
How's your mowers holding up?
Um, the mowers are doing well, we had one, the PTO shaft. Where it comes out of the back of the tractor and there's bolts that hold the shaft on, the bolt sheared off, snapped apart, we're waiting on the part, but the mowers, they're actually doing well. I mean, three, the three of them are still out running.
Making more progress.
Yeah, it's amazing how fast it's grown. You know, always does, they're out moving.
Good deal. Thanks, Brad.
Yep, anything else, Brad? Anything else for Brad?
Nope.
Okay, thanks, guys, thanks, Brad.
Yep.
Rick, what have you got for us this morning?
Morning, Rick.
Hi, guys.
Good morning.
I wanna do uh. Address a couple of budget things with you guys. I know this economic development is moving some things out. I don't know if they're completely gonna move out, maybe it's by the end of the month, I don't know, but. Going forward, if if the future plans are. Maybe moving another office in there, they may be wanting some remodeling done there to accommodate whatever that is. Should I budget, I have no idea what that cost will be, but should I throw some money in for twenty twenty-six for that?
I I would think so.
I'm I'm trying to think what development moved in there, did we paint, did we?
They just moved in, what, a couple of years ago, right? From the third floor down there.
We did very little, they kind of just kind of took it how it was.
Okay.
Down in the basement corners.
Yeah.
Well.
Future plans maybe were, and they could have changed the office that may go in there, but probably wants them to.
Yeah. Good question.
What's? What's the plan for that part of the building?
Well, uh, it it's somewhat on hold because initially. We were planning on having the health department move out to Grand Street, and now that's not gonna happen. So I think we're gonna have to take another look at. Uh, if economic development moves out, what we wanna do. Uh, I I mean, my goal is to kind of empty out the east end of of the first floor hallway. And isolate that for IT. Um, so that's what. I wasn't sure with Public Defender, how we'd handle that, cause I. I don't wanna move them from a space un- unless it's an equal or better than space, so.
So, in answer to your question, I guess my my feeling would be just mark time with this. I mean, we don't know, so why would you do anything?
We don't know, yeah, I I wouldn't want you to do anything, but you're asking, should you budget to do something to improve that space? The other alternative we've talked about is long-term storage in there also.
And that's kind of the idea, we could do long-term storage. At at the east end of the hall in those offices, because those would not require public access.
Right.
You know, you're you're gonna budget for some, I mean, you, are you asking if you should budget additional?
Yes, I should budget additional for that, um.
I I would say, since we don't know what we're gonna do, like when we decide what we're gonna do, we'll just ask for an additional preparation.
Right.
Rather than you trying to guess and build it into your budget.
You might have to ask for additional anyhow.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think too, with anything with Golden Meadows, um I guess I really don't have a lot. I'm trying to use some of our county resources. To get as many overgrown things out there in order.
Right. I drove out yesterday, I mean, it it's looking, it's looking shabby, but. We don't know what we're gonna do with it, so.
Trim, trim it up in the front, I've been out there myself.
If you could just, if somebody could just do the basics.
I think uh, I've spoken with Brad, they're gonna go out there and spray.
Okay.
And then uh. When time allows, I'll try to get them trimmed down, least in front and everything, so. So, well, possibly not from there, I think.
Okay.
You guys probably gotta figure it out with the utilities out there.
Yeah, we talked about it this morning, I think we're good there.
Those were the two things that I had there, um. The, if you've noticed, my filing cabinets and things out here, they've been out there for a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Um, I think some of the county offices have gotten what they wanted.
Yeah.
But now they probably don't want those, I did have an employee. Like to have them if it's okay, they've been out there, you're all right with it.
Are we okay if that, Mark, can, he's got, he's got some things sitting in the hallway that our offices had access to, to.
Two filing cabinets.
Yeah, I think an email was sent to everybody if they were available.
So, someone would take it, is that okay?
Brad?
Is it really if I take the chair or at the building?
Do you need it at your o- your office?
Well, for the break from Mary B S, but you did.
Yeah, so everything, so e- everything will be out of there?
Okay, good.
Yeah, I I I I wish we had an an area out there where we could set up for. Like guests that are waiting to come in here, somebody that's waiting on their time slot or a little more of that. Front door to the commissioners meeting room here.
You guys know the roundabouts?
Yes.
Just, just a friendly reminder, I mean, we got a lot of traffic around the building now.
Yeah, yeah, so that changes traffic pattern of all downtown.
It does, you know, parades, pedestrians, whatever, there's just a lot going on.
Caused me to go down the alley this morning, and I never do that. A little bit interesting.
The uh. Believe the last meeting I wasn't here, the doors open, door four is open this second.
Thank you.
I saw that, yeah.
Does that cause any issues, any feedback on that or? And again, I I don't, I don't wanna just do that and and say. Deal with it, but.
I want help.
Yeah. Just let, keep us in, keep us in the loop.
The signs we talked about, which you knew that.
Right, good.
The other ones are up for access for that elevator.
Right.
Budget time, busy with that.
Good.
It's gonna be warm next couple of days.
It is, test our, test our systems again.
Chiller's working good?
So far, as far as I know, they're gonna get a test here. I checked the courthouse, it's twenty, seem to be working.
Good, good deal.
Got anything else?
Cause they've just got the two settings for the office, it's too cold and not cold enough.
Too cold and too hot. Okay, any else, guys?
I'm good.
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Rick.
Barb and Megan, come on up.
If I can prefer- reference this to start with, Dustin, Doug. Barb, Megan, we've all been on email loops constantly back and forth. And the point that we left the warning sirens at. Was I said, we would have to go to the commissioners to see if the commissioners would wanna pay the price to cover. These warning sirens under county insurance, so that's why Doug and Dustin are here. And I think Barb and Megan might have figures that they've gotten on value of the sirens and so forth, so. It's your guys' decision whether or not to to pay that extra uh out of the property casualty insurance.
Take away, ladies and guys.
How much was that cost Dustin that you gave us approximately?
So there was, there's fourteen sirens total, as our understanding, but. I believe four of them are. Insured by the city of Decatur, that what you guys found out? Six, six of them, yeah, okay. So the initial quote we got from Cincinnati to cover all fourteen was eighty-nine hundred dollars per year. And then, they're approximately thirty thousand dollars in value, just to give you an estimate.
Each each one or all?
Each one.
Yeah, yeah, some are, some are a little more, some are a little less.
Twenty-eight thousand, some are twenty-eight thousand, some are thirty-four thousand. Like generally, they're all about, on average, about thirty thousand each.
So, that's eight thousand nine hundred dollars per siren per year?
Per year, total for all fourteen sirens.
Fourteen, but six of which are Decatur.
Correct, so if we would take those off. That, then it would lower the premium to about six thousand dollars a year.
To cover, um.
And that does cover storm damage?
Yeah.
Because.
Yes, yeah.
One company wasn't, they weren't gonna cover the storm damage to the sirens, but this, you guys saw that.
Doing it this way is full coverage for pretty much anything that would happen. There would be a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible. But they would not be insured on over replacement costs, they would be insured on actual cash value, so depending on. The age of the siren, there's gonna be some depreciation, so the numbers that. I think these are from Bob, takes, those numbers are placement cost estimates. So depending on the age, they might only pay twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars at the time of the claim. Some of them are older than others. But in summary, for six thousand dollars a year to insure. Eight thirty thousand dollar sirens. Uh, we kind of were doing some math and you're gonna pay. In four years, you're gonna pay for one siren, basically, but you're gonna pay in premium and your twenty-five hundred dollar deductible. So it doesn't really make sense to.
Cincinnati Insurance, the end rider.
Yeah, it'd be adding it to the Cincinnati Insurance.
So you're not recommending that we add the coverage?
No, you guys, no, that's our, we're not recommending that, but we'll do whatever you guys want to do, but with the cost and the the risk. I mean, what brought all this up was the one that blew down and burned at the fire department. To our knowledge, that's the only one that's been damaged. Has there been other ones or?
That's the only ones been damaged. There's been some, we've had to do the maintenance work on it.
But this wouldn't cover maintenance.
So that's the only one that's been damaged.
Any other weather incident, Dan?
Part of one there that burnt was the pole at ground level rotten. So if we have any on wood poles, we might want to look at moving those over to a metal. Or I beam or something, but that's what caused the damage. The pole snapped and then when it hit, it ruined the siren itself, so. The wind got, got the pole.
So have you presented the Decatur yet? Or are they not even gonna consider the coverage on the six?
I think they already do. They already do cover.
Oh, they do cover theirs.
I I think part of the, part of this decision might be. Cause I I think you two are preparing a recommendation on, uh, how to proceed with. Uh, siren coverage for the entire county. And and if you're gonna come back with a recommendation at that point, we may end up with new placements and new sirens. That we would need to consider in addition to the old ones, so. May- maybe that would be a a time and place. You know, to to look at, hey, if if we're gonna put up four new sirens and they're forty or fifty thousand dollars apiece instead of.
Thirty, thirty-four.
Yeah, instead of thirty or twenty-five.
Yeah.
Thirty-two.
Might make sense to do something.
Gotcha. A- at that time, it might make more sense, but then. At that point, like to Dan's point, they'll probably have brand-new poles instead of old rotted poles too, so.
There's just not much risk to them being damaged. I mean, they're not. It's not like. The highway department's equipment where it's on the road and it's being used. They're just stationary. But other than a lightning strike and maybe some wind.
Yeah.
There's not a whole lot.
Twenty-five hundred dollar deductible.
Well, I I have to tell you, I've never met an insurance person that didn't recommend more insurance, so. Kudos to you guys. Thank you very much. I know, I know you said you do, but you also said you wouldn't recommend it based upon your analysis of the value of the coverage. And I've just got to tell you how much I appreciate that.
That's why they were hired.
Absolutely, that's, that's a breath of fresh air, guys. Thank you.
We could, we could work with you guys too to see, I mean, whenever you do get new ones or you replace the poles or anything like that, we can.
Barb's gonna have to go before council, I think, because she has a line for sirens in her budget. And I know Cory was talking about maybe covering out in the county and stuff, so we don't know what council's going to. End up funding and how much or anything.
Well, a lot of it depends on your recommendations.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you're getting your, your board's recommendation on those county white sirens.
We just got our study back for all the sirens. I brought copies if you guys want one.
Sure.
What, how much would that cost to go replacement value on that? Because those ones, like I said, they're thirty, forty, fifty thousand. These are thirty years old, so. It's not gonna pay much attention, which I agree to the recommendation, but if you get new ones, what's the replacement value? How much? Do you need to, how much more that premium is gonna go up?
Well, that premium, that premium's pretty much gonna stay the same as far as the, the initial cost. But then, then you're, then it just kind of makes sense to do it that way, because I appreciate the schedules a lot. You know, then, then you're only, instead of a thirty-year-old siren, you're really not gonna get a whole lot out of it, because that depreciation. With the brand new, and you're only, you know, if you're, you're into it, then you're gonna get, then you're kind of gonna get a lot more.
Go for that same premium, kind of, okay, that excellent, thank you.
Well, I agree, uh, why don't you get a recommendation from your board?
Yeah, let's wait and see. So, thanks, guys. Appreciate your work.
I like the way they did the study, but it's pretty easy to see where you got coverage at.
And so, so, so they're working on another study that will help us understand what the gap, where the gaps are and what it costs to plug those gaps.
And at least we'll know at that point about what the coverage could cost.
Okay, thanks, Doug.
Yeah, two, two last updates.
Sure.
Well, how Bliss McKnight, how it's going with Bliss?
Right, yeah, yeah.
February, um. The first auto claim, there was an auto claim on February eighteenth, nine days after we had switched. And you guys had a check in hand before you paid the premium, so. That all is going really well, and then, um, Dan could chime in here, but. They're actually doing a driver simulating training here the next couple of days. There's a trailer that's at the jail. That the sheriff's department and the city of Burner are gonna use. And my understanding is, what was the cost if you guys were to rent that?
About fifty-two hundred dollars for us to, we built the company by itself, but. Our insurance provides that as a benefit through our normal policy, so.
That's good.
And they do a couple of other different type of training, uh, and we're looking at using, uh, at no cost to the county, so. Uh, our training, uh, got interrupted with the seven hundred south project, where you use the school parking lots and train it. Well, traffic pattern changed, the school didn't want us in there, so this was our next best alternative. So, it's, and it's free, uh, if you pay for it, you're free.
With the prior carriers, we're not, we're not doing.
So you all are pleased with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is this your first coverage with Bliss McKnight?
No, we've had Jay County, we've had Jay County insured with them for years.
Good.
And so we knew going in that some of these things were gonna be available, which is just another plus, so.
Good.
It's going well.
Good deal. I see the guy at every conference I go to.
Yeah.
Hey, anything else for us? Appreciate you being here. Take advantage of you while you're here and the next we need to know.
And so their concern is who's gonna maintain the road. This may not be, you know, they, they want the road, they, they still want to have access.
Yeah.
And the question is, well, who's gonna maintain it? And obviously, they don't want to maintain it. And I said, well, we'll have to, I'll have to talk to the county and. Highway about it, but they're open to the idea of of putting in some sort of, you know, cul-de-sac or gate and closing it off. And maybe we'll take it, maybe we leave the road in place all the way up to that bridge. Um, but then you're still gonna have the same issues. But I think it depends on what, you know, Red Gold's willing to do.
Yeah.
We could come up with some sort of an easement and, you know, maintenance agreements, I suppose.
Well, the, the big issue was the bridge though, right?
Yeah, that was what, that was what prompted the whole discussion was. Not, not wanting to maintain the bridge.
Well, they mentioned wanting, you know, their farmer uses that to come over and farm, and they'd have to go around, and my thought is like. They're driving a combine through the middle of that red gold. I suppose they are. I got it. Which doesn't, doesn't make sense.
And even if they go around, it's not that far.
Yeah, no. So I, I think they're okay with, you know, closing it if we come up with some maintenance.
Sure.
I think Nate, Nate probably keep us posted on it too.
So it's like anything, nothing's, nothing's easy. But it, I think, and I explained to him, I think it makes sense to go back to, I think it's where it turns and then goes south.
Right.
Maybe put a turnaround right there.
Yeah.
With a gate and just say, okay, you can lock this, you're a farm. Now, they'd have no problem getting in there. They can go, they can drive right into the field.
Just becomes a lane.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, they did get back with me and. So that's what's going on with that.
Anything else?
And I did go ahead and, and I talked to, uh, Matt Halderman about eight hundred. And decided to just go ahead and, and rather than trying to, I just said, just give me some. Quick appraisals on those parcels, so we've got each, we've got an individual appraisal, so I can get those offers tailored to each of those gentlemen.
I think I let you guys know that a lot.
Yeah, Matt, Matt is working on it, so I expect to have those pretty soon.
Anything else?
Once we get those appraisals, then we can do the qualified offer letter.
Right.
And then we can, uh, I, I don't know.
Mike, Mike got me the, I needed the tile size and the, and the drainage plan, so he gave me that.
So.
I'll, uh, we'll get that updated appraisal, I'll send it to Dave Bumgarner, tell him what the drainage plan is, and let's take it from there.
And then, uh, will, will we, uh. As far as any, uh. Upgraded road easement, will that be through eminent domain or will that?
No, it'll be deed. We've got legal descriptions. Yep, deeded right, permanent, deeded permanent right away.
At that point, we can get it on the road schedule. So, but, let's say if we get the tile size, the deeded, uh, easements we need. Uh, would that be on the road schedule for twenty twenty-six?
I imagine, I don't know.
And that'd be ideal when you don't pay for it, you know, landowners to agree. See what the next step is, because if some don't agree, you know, that could be more time. Yes, that's the goal. Get it started in twenty-six.
Very good. It's been going on for a long time.
Been a while. Well, every time we turn around, they want more right of way, it seems. Started off.
Highway Department.
Yeah. It's not, it's not Brad's fault.
That big hill there, that's the problem.
Anything else for our attorneys, guys?
I don't.
Shannon, have you got anything for us?
Just one quick tidbit. A couple of weeks ago, Nate mentioned that he, we were awarded some federal funding, but it was pending a desk audit for Title VI and ADA. So we did get that completed and submitted last week to end that. Um, Clay helped me with it and Nate helped me with it a little bit as well, so that is all finalized, submitted, so fingers crossed that that'll go smoothly. I'm sure he's gonna mention it next week, but I just didn't realize he was not here this week, so I'm sure I would. You're aware that that's all done, done, dealt with.
Thank you. Sheriff, you have something for us?
Two things, uh. One, we had a little excitement over the weekend Saturday afternoon about five o'clock, fire department gets dispatched to the jail. Alarm's going off, welcome to find out. RTU one, rooftop unit one, uh, the fan blade disintegrated. And cut a coil, uh, and shut down half that unit, uh, and that's what tripped the fire alarm. So there was no fire, no, we did not have to evacuate or anything like that, but, uh. That unit is only working at fifty percent, and here we are coming into the hot spell, so, um, they have a quote to get it fixed. I'm gonna talk to council next week, see how they, I have the money to fix it, but it's gonna take a huge shot, it's fifteen thousand dollars to get this fixed. Um, just wanna let you guys know about it, uh, more than likely, they're gonna say fix it, then at the end of the year, if we need more money, we'll do the initial, then instead of. Ask for one map, I just wanna let you know, Hattersley's responded, brought a guy down that day. Sent us pictures, I have pictures of it too, just, like I said, when the blade literally disintegrated into pieces, one of them. Struck the coil, cut the coil, which leaked out, which ruined the coal.
Yeah.
Um, we're still getting about a ten-degree difference over the evaporator, so it's still cooling, but it's gonna be a strain the next two days guaranteed. Uh, but they think, uh, they'll have the condenser about five day, or the coil in about five days, and they'll be able to get it fixed as soon as they get all their equipment, so. Just wanna catch up on that.
That's nothing they have to use a crane to set.
No, uh, no, no, it's just, it's like a radiator, they gotta change out inside there. Yeah, so, no, no crane, thank God. Um, second thing, um, with the, uh, public nuisance, uh, out at, uh, Stan that we talked about.
True. Country.
Country Acres. Um, we had sent registered letters to every property owner out there. Letting them know that they're in violation of the public nuisance. Um, we do have a question though for Mark. Um, Julian Reed made the determination up around Row Acres, that, that road, one road up there was not a. Public access, it became a private nuisance, because it's a road that not everybody uses, only people who live there. Well, there's no one living on Paradise Lane anymore. Is that still gonna be considered a public nuisance, or is that could be switched over to a? Private nuisance. Now, the, the property on the county road, yes, we understand that, but the going through. We need a, a determination from your office, is that an interest, still a private or a public nuisance? Uh, cause that affects a lot of the properties. Uh, other than that, we're looking at, uh, the ones out on the county road. That we've had about a dozen people respond to letters asking what it was. We sent pictures of their property, basically cleaned it up. Cut the grass, cut the grass at least twice a week, or once every few, get the trash out. The one trailer, it sounds like was hired to get removed. And something fell through, so, uh, Sergeant Hobager's the one working on this. He's gonna reach out, uh, he's gonna reach out to Ellis. Ellis mom signed for the registered letter, he didn't sign for it, so you gotta make sure he, he is aware, but we're working on it.
There's the question for Brad. Does the county plow Paradise Lane?
Yes.
That it serves as a public road?
Well, when everybody lived there, correct. No one lives on that road anymore.
But, but, but they still own property there, so I would think they would still be entitled to access.
That's what, we don't know what, how that got changed up at Row Acres, though.
It's a public access road.
Yeah, I know.
But that's why I'm asking, if he tells me it's public, it's public, it's fine. I just want, that, my officers brought that up because of Row Acres and. We just want a determination of it's public, great, we'll continue doing what we're doing.
So, so you notified the property owners, what's, what's the next step now?
Uh, citations being issued to them for not doing anything, they're cleaning it up, we give them ten days, and we're, we're. And we tell them, look, if you start showing signs that you're working towards it, we're not, we're not gonna hold your feet to the ten days, because. Some of those, you're not gonna get done in ten days, but if they cut the grass and working at it, then we'll, we'll just monitor and keep going, but at some point, if. They show no signs of it or not doing, then, uh, next up is issuing citations.
Well, and the ideal outcome is that they clean up their property.
Correct. And then after that, if citations don't work, then, um, something in the county has to come up with a plan to hire. Private person to come in, clean it up, and then you just put the lid on, uh, when the property sold at tax sale, then. The county will get their money back at that point.
Well, and a couple of years ago, there was an opportunity or a discussion that we had with Solid Waste. To where there was some kind of cooperation that they would have with the property. So it might be time to revisit that for the benefit of helping this process, and I. You know, at that time, Solid Waste Board and Jeff seemed to really be cooperative with, with an effort there.
Cause I will say right now, private contractor coming in to try and cut that grass is. If we can find anybody, they'll do it, because they, you almost have to have somebody walk out in front of your mower before you're not running over anything. I mean, it's that overgrown, so if we can find somebody, great, but it's, it's not gonna be inexpensive, that's for sure. But again, that car, charge will get passed over to the, the, the lean on the property. Yeah.
So, how, how long ago was it that you?
Uh, last week is when we started getting, uh, responses back, so, uh, probably the end of this week, we're looking at.
Go check and see if any work's being done.
Uh, Sergeant Callahan, he was going out today, uh, to check, because we needed to check with Mr. Ellis to see. Uh, about one, uh, since he had signed for it, we wanna make sure he's aware of it. So, uh, but most people were pretty good, they just didn't know what they need to do, and I said, well, just look at the picture. Cut the grasses, for several of them, it's just cut grass. Uh, and then there's several that has a lot of trash that needs picked up, and one is that big trailer.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's, uh, I believe Sergeant Callahan talked, or Sergeant Hobager talked to somebody, and they had it. Where somebody's gonna come tear it apart, I think for scrap on the frame and stuff, that, that was gonna be. Where somebody's gonna come tear it apart, I think for scrap on the frame and stuff, that, that was gonna be their payment, then something fell through.
Looks like one started to scrap out, they've got the siding off of it, but it's, the shell's still sitting there.
So, uh, but, yeah, we're, we're working on it, and like I said, next step will be issuing citations, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Well, I very much appreciate your work, because, you know, we were just looking for something to move that neighborhood in a positive direction.
And, uh, Stan brought up, the, the properties that are listed that are owned by the homeowners association.
Acres homeowners association.
There isn't, so I, 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 I'm a little dumbfounded of what we do with those.
Yeah.
Cause there's no citation to be given to anybody either on those properties. Um, but the ones that we had contact with seemed positive, and they said they'd get it cleaned up, so hopefully we'll start seeing some, uh. Positiveness coming out of it.
The ones by homeowners association, I mean, obviously, nobody's paying taxes on them, so. Those are probably the ones that Aaron Ellis has been buying up, I suppose.
More than likely, and it takes about almost, it takes almost two years for it to go to sell, cause you have to go through three tax seasons.
Oh.
Before it goes up to that, so.
Yeah, three installments, Dylan, boy.
Yes, so, we're just at the beginning. All right, anything else?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Dan, just one topic, I moved here in nineteen seventy-one, I saw that place back then, it's a whole lot worse than it is now.
Seventy-one was a brilliant year.
You were born that year?
It was a grand year, seventy-one.
It was a rat's nest, bro.
Ian, you have something for us? You have something for us? Okay. Anybody else, anybody from the public, anything for the, for the good of the cause?
I only got one question for Mark, what's the latest, longest date back you ever looked in the books for the, uh, anything in records?
In commissioner records?
Yeah, how far back, eighteen ninety, eighteen sixty?
Maybe eighteen thirty-six, that's the oldest. I don't remember.
Don't remember?
That one, I think it was nineteen sixteen.
Guys, anything else?
No, I, I did sign up for that legislative update.
Did you, thank you. Hopefully, we'll get some good information out of that, appreciate you going for us, that's that.
Yeah, they're, they're the lobbyists, Jake and Jacob has been our lobbyist for the IC.
I already have a weather tomorrow, I'll go.
Hey, before you guys go, I'll tell you my idea, I gave to Dan and Rick.